cruising down around Ute, going across the bridge and turn left by the post office. It could have just cruised across them. But it's something that's a job.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Dellafield Common Council meeting for Monday, September 15th, 2025, coming to order now at 7:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please, Molly.
Other person, Henry?
Here.
Other person, Schaefer?
Here.
Other person, Valdi?
Here.
Other person, Wilken?
Here.
Other person, Pavin?
Here.
Other person, Price?
Here.
Other person, Luthlin?
Here.
Mayor Iker?
Present.
Administrator Hefner?
Here.
Okay, thank you. So now I'm looking for a motion to review and pass the minutes for August 18th's regular meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of our August 18th meeting as presented.
A second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, or abstentions? Okay, minutes are passed. Item five, City of Dellafield citizens' comments. If there's anyone here wishes to speak on anything, please come up and press the bottom bar and the green light will go on. Name and address, please, to kick it off.
Philip Schuman, 1717, Nakawica Road, City of Dellafield, Heartland mailing address. I'm speaking about item 10B, the parking around Nakawica Lake Yacht Club. A little background, the yacht club has been around over 100 years, predates the City of Dellafield. In fact, one yacht club member, the late George Butzer, was instrumental in spinning off the City of Dellafield from the town of Dellafield over 50 years ago. The yacht club has produced a lot of members who were very civic-minded in the City of Dellafield, these three mayors that I know, including me and aldermen like Alderman Paul Price. And I would like the council to vote yes on the proposed ordinance number 842, parking around Mariner Drive. Seems like a good way to solve the problems of parking, and apparently it's been approved by the fire department and the police department. So again, I thank you for your service to the City of Dellafield, and I hope you vote for the parking proposal we have here. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Phil. Next.
Mayor Alderman Schaefer.
Ma'am, could you please pause and stage your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Holly Nankin. The address is 1227 Mariner Drive.
Can you please spell that last name?
Yes, N as in Nancy, A-N-K-I-N.
I think we're good to go.
Okay. So my husband and I have lived at 1227 Mariner Drive, which is located near the end of Mariner Drive cul-de-sac for the past 44 years. We oppose the proposal to create members-only parking in a no-parking area along Mariner Drive. Why? Our concerns are safety, the proposed expansion of membership at the club, equality to all homeowners on the cul-de-sac, the enforcement and regulation of this proposal, as well as the club's lack of notification of this proposal to Mariner Drive homeowners. First, I'd like to address safety. It's a major concern. As the yacht club has grown, so have our concerns. The Mariner Drive cul-de-sac is too narrow to allow parking on the east side and will add to the congestion already present during events. When the yacht club is hosting an event and we and our guests are trying to access our home, there is often a traffic backup and crowding on both sides of the street. Yacht club members are pulling their cars and trailers into their parking area, cars and trucks are lined up waiting to launch their boats at the public landing, and public traffic is often traveling to the end of the cul-de-sac to turn around while all of this is going on. When you add pedestrian traffic, including small children, at the boat landing on a busy Saturday and Sunday, this area becomes hazardous. Easing congestion means moving traffic and parking away from Mariner Drive. In 2022, my husband and I created a private parking area on our property to address our concern over the congestion of traffic on Mariner Drive. This area offers five guests safe off-street parking when we host parties and events. We are asking the yacht club to use the same off-street parking approach in addressing neighborhood congestion. My second point. Proposed membership expansion at the yacht club is also a concern. I would like to offer this personal experience. My husband and I are part of the leadership of a private organization in Whitefish Bay, Wisconsin. When we purchased our building in a busy neighborhood several years ago, the city council required us to provide off-street parking for all member vehicles and to reduce congestion. They capped our membership. At the time, it seemed restrictive, but now that we have a similar situation in our own neighborhood, as homeowners, we can see their logic. As we understand it, the Nakawica Yacht Club is hosting a membership drive. Good for them, that's fine. But what is their present membership and how much do they intend to grow? As their neighbors, we would appreciate knowing these numbers and how they intend to handle the additional traffic and special events in an already crowded area. Adding more congestion with additional traffic from increased membership must be considered in any proposal. To reduce noise and traffic concerns, we ask the city council to consider a reasonable cap to yacht club membership.
The issue at hand tonight is parking?
I understand. I'm just including that because of the crowding of the area. Third, and the rest will address the parking, enforcement and regulation of this proposal is another concern. Who will be monitoring this area for safety and adherence during events? Who will be enforcing this proposal and preventing, as I know with our private parking space, non-yacht club members from parking in these spaces and all along Mariner Drive? If additional police enforcement is required to enforce this proposal, who will be paying for this? This is a private club making this change. Fourth, I'd like to support the alternative ideas presented by our neighbor, Dr. Michael Berger. And these are some of his thoughts. Recently, the yacht club expanded their outdoor party areas and reportedly has land available to expand its onsite lot. This is where the additional parking should be added for the yacht club, just as we have done on our own property. Boat trailer boat parking could be moved off-site to a nearby private or leased lot. Overflow car parking could be handled in the park as well, which can easily accommodate the number of cars in question. We ask the city council to evaluate any change in the context of the club's liquor license, membership capacity, noise, traffic, and safety impacts. Fifth, why isn't Alderman outside Alderman Schaefer's district sponsoring this proposal? We weren't notified of this proposal, or of this requested change, by the yacht club, and actually, we heard about it by accident over the weekend. As homeowners, we deserve clarity on significant changes to the neighborhood, clarity on district representation, and any conflict of interest screening. So, in closing, in the spirit of being good neighbors, we want to acknowledge and appreciate the yacht club's care of their building and party areas. Their property is always neat and orderly. We would like to continue our good neighbor relationship. However, we do not feel we are being unreasonable in asking for safer alternatives to their need for additional parking and monitoring membership capacity in our very small neighborhood. We encourage the city council to maintain Mariner Drive as no parking on both sides of the street. Our request to the city council is to deny any proposal that designates public on-street parking for the exclusive benefit of the yacht club and to cap membership capacity for the safety of our neighborhood. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is David Price. My address is 6560 North Alberta Court in Glendale, Wisconsin, 53217. I'm speaking regarding the same thing on 10B regarding the parking. I am the current Commodore in transition kind of for the yacht club. And so I just wanted to come and say that this, what we're asking for is essentially the same thing that we've been doing for over 70 years. So it's the same kind of concept. We were there only six months out of the year, and we sail a few nights and one day a weekend. And we have been more cognizant of our neighbors in the recent past. I mean, we've always been cognizant, we've always had good relationship with our neighbors. We're trying to keep the noise down as much as we can. So, yeah, so I just don't know if anybody has any questions, but I speak in the benefit of 10B.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to anything on the agenda or off the agenda? Just tap that bottom bar on the microphone. Yep, oh, one more. There you go. And then name and address, please, sir.
Ryan Slapekis, 1307, Mariner Drive.
Can you please spell that last name?
All right, you're good to go.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you for the opportunity to express my concerns. When I learned just a few days ago of the yacht club's request for parking on the east side of Mariner Drive, I really didn't have strong feelings at all about it one way or another. Frankly, I thought of it as a bargaining chip to help resolve a, to us, a much larger issue, and that is a problem with noise, the volume and the hour of day when the noise is a problem. So I just thought to myself, let them have parking on Mariner Drive if, if they'll agree to cut back on the noise, the volume and the hour of the day. But then I got more information and I changed my mind. They had already agreed to reduce the noise on numerous occasions, and they didn't honor those arrangements. Having already been warned by an in-house email from the yacht club management to its members of the need to reduce the noise without any real results, I have to conclude that they still don't take this seriously, and therefore, they give me no reason to expect them to honor any other agreements or arrangements. So as for parking on Mariner Drive, further thought makes it clear to me that any change in the existing restrictions would be problematic, and so it is my wish that the current arrangements remain as is. I do have a very brief statement from the I do have a very brief statement from the newest resident on Mariner Drive couldn't be here tonight. Can I just mention?
Fine, sure.
Okay.
Can you please read that person's name and address for the record?
Dan and Gail McLaughlin, 1347, Mariner Drive. They're not even completely moved in yet, that's how new they are. And due to previous plans, they were not able to be here tonight, but their wish is simply this: We like to keep it peaceful, quiet, and private as possible.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to any items?
Am I supposed to hit this?
No, you're good now. So, just name and address.
Mary Slapekis, 1307, Mariner Drive. So, I have some similar concerns to my husband who just spoke. I've had the privilege of growing up here on Mariner Drive since my family moved here in 1954, and so, I've lived there for over 50 years. And it was just a fabulous place to grow up because it was quiet, it was in the country, and of course, the proximity to the lake. In fact, my father was a former Commodore of the yacht club, and he was also instrumental in recommending the former Stockenjir Cottage as an ideal site for the N Y C clubhouse. Back in 1962, rather, when the clubhouse was originally procured, it was comprised primarily of lake residents interested in sailing so considerably smaller than the volume of membership and traffic that has grown substantially over the years till today. However, one thing I have noticed that has not changed over the years is the culture and the climate of alcohol consumption associated with sailing and the social events that are held there. And that's given rise to concerns because of the noise issues and particularly for people, our neighbors, that are closer in proximity to the clubhouse. But even the distance that we are, we're at the end of the cul-de-sac, we personally have experienced disturbances at our home late at night due to loud bands blasting their music at unnecessary levels accompanied by members at those social gatherings loudly singing and cheering encouraged by drinking. Even this distance away, our sleep has been disturbed. However, I too was willing to take a cooperative approach to resolving this issue, but the more inquiries I made, the more concerned I became, especially because agreed-upon matters in the past had not been respected as far as shutdown times and even parking on Mariner, where the no parking signs weren't respected and parking on both sides of the streets was an issue as well. So, when I went down yesterday to talk to the yacht club members, initially, I got the impression that they were looking for two to three times in a season when the regattas were being held, and I understand that because I used to go to regattas when I was younger, and parking was sometimes an issue when sailboats were brought in from other lakes. But my understanding after talking to them is that it would not include just two to three regattas in a season, but weekly on a Tuesday and Thursday evenings from 5:00 to 9:00 PM and weekend afternoons. And that becomes a matter of concern because by the time they leave, especially in the evenings, it's dark at night, and they'd be crossing the road and probably have been drinking as well. So, I do understand that they would appreciate convenience, but I think what really takes priority here is the fact that they have shown disrespect for following the rules in the past. So, what reason would we have to believe that they would do so going forward? I also strongly believe that alternative arrangements for additional parking should be pursued elsewhere, perhaps trying to negotiate something with Waukesha County Park System for a special permit for members to utilize the parking lot on the hill, which is easily accessible to the boardwalk, or possibly expanding spaces on their existing lot. There already is a lot of traffic congestion right at that corner in proximity to the public boat launch, and that at times impedes through traffic to even our home. So, to add to it on a curve and a narrow road and inhibit access by emergency vehicles is a huge safety concern. And I feel that the key concerns that our neighbor, Michael Berger, expressed in his letter to the city are really valid concerns that should be given attention. It is also my desire to maintain an environment of cooperative coexistence based on mutual respect for all of us as neighbors, but I urge the council members to reject the yacht club's proposal, and I thank you for giving consideration to my concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Michael Berger, B-E-R-G-E-R, and my address is 1221, Mariner Drive, and that's in Heartland. So, I appreciate my neighbors coming in. They're much more eloquent than I'm going to be, so you guys are in for a rough couple minutes. I tried to be as prepared as possible, but...
Let's keep it to about three.
Okay, so I'm the immediate neighbor to the north, and the concerns I have are really just kind of focused. So, number one is safety. So, the way that this, that Mariner Drive comes down, there's kind of a sharp right-hand turn, and often with the parking proposal, potentially if you have an SUV or a larger vehicle on that curve, it's going to drive traffic to the center, and then potentially your sightlines are gone. You can't even see the other side of the street as they're parking. The other thing is that I have personally been unable to access my home multiple times over the course of the past probably 10 to 12 years. Just recently, I had a trailer on the back of my truck, and you know, there were cars parked all the way down to the end of the cul-de-sac, and I couldn't navigate the truck without striking someone else's car. You know, Mr. Price brings up a good point that, you know, they've been parking like this for 70 years, but it's clearly marked no parking all the way up and down Mariner Drive. And I was told when I first moved in, the first experience I had with yacht club membership was, you know, when the leadership came over, a real nice guy, just said, you know, we occasionally have some parties, and they would notify me of the parties initially over the course of the first decade. And they also said that it says no parking on the street, but we're allowed to park on the street. And I just kind of took him for his word and didn't really ask until recently speaking with Chief Nyren and learned that that was never the case at all. And, you know, there's illegally parking, and it's not two to three times for regattas, it's every Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, some Sundays. I think the other thing is a fairness thing. So, you know, if this private club can have access to a public right-of-way and have it permitted, you know, either through themselves or through the city, what's stopping me then from having a permit to park across the street? What's stopping, you know, Voodoo Brewing from carving out some space for them to have their patrons only be able to park in that spot? It just, to me, it doesn't seem like it's all that fair. And then, you know, there's the cost and the maintenance. Right now, if you drive down Mariner Drive, they just resurface the whole road. It's, you know, really nice level, and then they put a gravel shoulder on. In front of the yacht club where there's been parking, there are such deep ruts that that's going to have to be repaired. So, it's a cost thing. Do the taxpayers then have to pay for damage potentially caused by this private area? Who's going to maintain the area? Like Mary said, who's going to police this? So, you know, do the citizens have to go out and see if they've got a Nagawicca Lake parking pass? How many people get the passes? Is it everybody that's associated with the club? Often when there's cars in the street, there's spots open in the lot, and for me, it's just been a safety thing. I've been unable to access my home, and my girlfriend has, you know, nearly been hit by a car walking her dogs because of that, the dangerous sightlines. So, I'm just worried that something bad's going to happen. I'm not here to tell them how to find parking off-street. I think that's a club issue, but I believe that they can most likely figure it out without having to carve out the spot, specifically this spot on a curve in front of their property. So, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate Mr. Schaefer letting me know. This was great because we hadn't heard anything from yacht club membership or anything about plans to change your parking. So, thank you for letting us know.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else wish to speak? You need to press the button now.
Okay. Awesome, thank you so much. My name is Isabella Ward, and I, my husband and I live at 1349, Mariner Drive. And so, to the common council, the mayor and Alderman Schaefer, thank you so much for hearing my comments. My husband is unable to be here tonight, but we have lived at 1349, Mariner since 2003. We're the last home on Mariner Drive. So, that's about 22 years, and we just want to add our voice to the discussion. I'm reading my husband's email pertaining to this request by the Nagawicca Yacht Club that you are considering this evening. We want to state at the onset that we do value the yacht club, yet we also share the many concerns articulated by our neighbors, including the Nankins, which are noted below and those of Dr. Berger shared with you separately in here tonight. The Nankins and Dr. Berger have done a wonderful job outlining the issues and concerns surrounding this proposal. There is no reason for us to repeat them other than to state that we fully support their positions. While Mark, my husband, is unable to attend this evening, I, Isabella, am here to attend to demonstrate the importance of this issue to us. Finally, thank you for repaving Mariner Drive this summer. We greatly appreciate it. It has been a horrible road for a number of years, and so, to have smooth, nice, safe road for us and bikers and walkers, it's just been great. And we'd like to thank you for your public service and seek your assistance in helping us maintain our delightful little residential neighborhood. Now, this is my husband. I just want to add something. In the scope of being a good neighbor, I appreciate good neighbors, and we do our best to be good neighbors. I will say that my experiences with the, Mark was definitely more soft in, he changed his mind. I was taking a firmer stance in honoring the requests for parking. And the reason that I was taking a harder position is because of the, there have, over the years that we have been on Mariner, I frequently, and I mean frequently, encounter very uncooperative members of yacht club folks that take over the road and we're waiting to get through, and we're, I've been disregarded. I cannot get through at all, and it's, doors are open, and you just, you just can't get through. And I think like if we're going to be good, and you want to be together, and you want to, you know, have a nice yacht club for people, I mean, I love seeing the sailboats out on the lake, so I'm not opposed to that at all. But I think that behavior and common courtesy, that has to mean something, right? To be a good neighbor. And I will say that I just don't. I get attitudes from people looking at me like I'm in their way when I live here. And that's kind of an issue to me. I think that the attitude and the entitlement, it's kind of unnerving to me at times. So, with that said, thank you so much for hearing my voice. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak to this? Or any other item that's either on the agenda or on their mind? Going once? Okay, citizens' comments are now closed. Consent agenda, looking to approve Resolution 2025-08, establishing the city of Delphiel Library Levy as required to obtain exemption from the 2025 Waukesha County Tax Levy for the 2026 budget. I know that Stephanie is here if you have any questions about the wonderful work at the library, otherwise, we're just looking for a motion to get this thing passed.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Abstentions? All right, pay our bills for next year. Thanks, Stephanie. Okay, seven boards, committees, and commission reports. Molly, licenses? No licenses, okay. Plan Commission report by Dirk, you ready for this?
Sure, why not?
All right.
Not a lot going on in the Plan Commission that needs to come to the council's attention. We do have one, one item, property D E L T 0840994003, west 330, north 247, Kettle Marine Drive. The folks are just requesting an extraterritorial, I got to get used to saying that word, extraterritorial certified survey map approval to divide a lot into two in town of Delphiel. So, I would so move approval on that.
I'll second.
Any discussion, other than the letter by the planner says it's all good?
It's all good.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Or abstentions? Okay, item 7B1A is approved, so if you happen to be here for that, you are free to go. Item 7C, Lake Welfare, Mr. Price.
Yes, Lake Welfare would normally have met on Wednesday, but we're actually meeting on Thursday for annual Lakeville Awareness Meeting, so that'll be always a nice attended meeting, and hopefully, most of the people on the lake or off the lake are able to attend that meeting.
Is it a new location this year?
It's...
Is it at the Legion?
Right. Yeah, at the Legion, that's the second year now.
Second year, so the, and that's Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday night?
At 6 o'clock.
Lake Welfare Awareness Meeting at 6 o'clock at the Legion?
Six o'clock.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
All right, thanks, Paul. Park and Recreation Commission, Tree Board.
Park and Rec, we've got the, happy to say the scavenger hunt is back in Fireman's Park. There's a little kiosk there with photos. It's a kid's scavenger hunt game that's been faded and weather-worn for many years, and it's, we just pulled up a new one. So, kids get over to Fireman's Park, play on the slides, and do the scavenger hunt. Also, the commission contacted the Heartland Park and Rec Directors. We're going to meet with them from time to time. It's my understanding that years ago, there was an annual meeting between the two, just to kind of compare notes and see how we could work together. And as you know, Heartland Recreation organizes a lot of classes and events that Delphiel citizens can participate in at a discounted rate. So, we want to see how we can work together with our neighbor.
Did you say it's been a couple years? I can't remember it happening. So, it's a long time ago. So, I'm glad, thanks for getting it started again.
One of our longtime commission members brought it up.
Okay.
It was new to me, so this is a great idea, I probably thought. That's it.
All right, thanks, Mark. Public Works Committee.
Public Works Committee met on August 30th. Nothing to bring to the council, we're considering some just minor issues. I'm not going to steal Tom's thunder on the work that the Public Works Department did in support of the flood control and everything, so I'll leave it to him for his later report.
All right, thank you. Delhart Commission, that's me. Our next meeting is tomorrow, and upcoming meeting, we'll have our general manager, Rob, come in and give a presentation about the upgrades that we've gone through over the last couple of years, and just so you're aware of how well we're keeping things up, and it's a good, it's a good smooth running ship over there, which is all you want to hear about, right? Okay, Police Commission.
No meeting, no report.
All right, Library Board.
Yeah, we met and approved the budget that's coming to the council, and then there's some great information in your packet from the director on usage and some fun things going on in the library. And then, as always, on the last Thursday of the month is Culvers in Wales from 4:00 to 7:00 fundraiser to help friends of the library.
Awesome. All right, thank you. And Zoning Board of Appeals, I think you're clear on that one?
Yeah, no meeting.
Promotional and Tourism Commission.
We did not have a quorum, so we did not have a meeting.
Oh, no. All right, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, there was a meeting. I could defer to the chief on that, but I think this was probably hiring. I, I could defer to the chief on that, but I think this was probably hiring. So, we hired. And Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, we're going to have some business for that coming up here in a minute. Dear Management Committee.
There. Dear Management Committee met on August 19th. The only news there is that the, the bow hunting season started this past weekend. As of the last meeting, we had 79 hunters signed up.
Nice.
So, we're off and going and our next meeting is tomorrow night.
Good deal. Okay, other committees, boards and commissions, none. So, item eight, unfinished business. We've got a discussion, possible action regarding the following items. We'll start with possible action regarding a proposed amended Lake Country Fire and Rescue intermunicipal agreement to address funding, staffing, governance and other miscellaneous matters. So, if you don't mind, I'm going to give a brief, very brief summary, not like the one I gave last time, but, um, just try to highlight the goals that I think that I had going into this rather arduous process years ago, maybe starting three years ago. But then as mayor and then the last, really the nine months since we've been dealing with the Wisconsin Policy Forum and some other closer discussions that we've had, what that's culminated into and whether or not I think we got, you know, we hit those goals. So, briefly put, obviously we want to, the goals are to address the labor situation, simplify and retool the funding formula to create more equity, make it simpler, right? Listen to our constituents, which is always good. Be good neighbors and look to the future. This is my, I'll go through real quick here. I'll get to the next one. I'm having Molly drive. So, I think most critically, the reason that this has become an issue is because of the labor situation that we've been made aware of from every different angle, from different just discussions that we've had and that, and that is the simple lack of availability of low-paid, almost free labor has evaporated. The, the paid-on call, the internship programs have, have changed. And, you know, we needed to, a compelling case was made in front of the, the city and our partners in the Lake Country Fire and Rescue some time ago that the solution to this is to go to a full-time fire department. And that's the goal all along in these discussions. And we've been wrangling over how to, how to pay for it, really. But, um, so the amendment that's in front of us tonight for our approval, we can talk to the, the level to which we can approve it tonight. But, um, I mean, this budget's for 12 new hires over the next four years. Three a year, each year for four years. That's what's included in the numbers that we're going to be, that we're biting off. You know, the next piece of this equation is to simplify and retool the funding formula with one goal is definitely to create more equity. We noticed that the existing formula that we put in place in 2020 included a cap that kind of protected the city's position as one of the most highly leveraged contributors to the, to the funding percentages. Removing that cap exacerbated that disparity and what this does is attributes it in a little different way where we're shifting, we're lowering our contribution by a little bit over 10% and shifting it to other municipalities that are partners with us. And it's being divided up in a more, at least explainable way. You know, property values, population and call volumes, you know, are the, are the key elements that people look to, to determine, you know, what impacts the service levels that people receive and what impacts our cost. We can talk more about that, but those are the three pieces of the formula that are, have been migrating to exclusively those three pieces of the formula to, to fund this moving forward so you can explain it to someone in a grocery store line as opposed to charts and graphs. So, and like I said, this, the amendment that, that we're looking at tonight shifts about 10% of our burden onto a couple of our other partners. So, okay. Obviously, we need to listen to our constituents and I don't think this got lost in any of our discussions, but we did pass a referendum a few years ago and there was a clear acknowledgement from our citizens, I think it was about a 65% pass percentage, maybe, maybe a little bit higher. But, the consensus was that to hire more firefighters. Now, we did fulfill the terms of that stated referendum as far as the quantity of people that we were hiring. However, another caveat in there was that we were empowered with the ability to change the, the, the fire fee in a way to responsibly hire more people in the future. And what's in front of us is, what has happened already is our fire fee initially was $450. It went up to $466 in 2025. And, uh, the current amendment in front of us keeps, the next two years increases well in, well in the middle-low single digits as far as, so four, seven percent, somewhere in there. And that, that gives us a budget that's in front of us, that's actionable, to get six new firefighters in the next two years. For what would amount to an increase to somewhere in the neighborhood of $482 next year. So, that's just a number to have in your head. It's about a 4% increase. It might, might go as high as 512 the following year to get another six people and that'd be about a 7% increase. These are all things that are, there's dynamics involved in it. When we, when we get new houses, we get more payers. When our call volume changes, the, the formula changes. Other communities that are part of our organization, certainly not Shenekewan Village or Conwalk Lake, Lake aren't growing like others, but town of Delafield, you see the growth that they have along the freeway. Town of Genesee is dealing with lots of growth as well. And so, these dynamics are going to work out to make our situation look a little bit better financially and also just, you know, more, more money behind the, the fire department is good. And, um, so the other thing is just to be good neighbors and that seems real holistic. But, um, uh, we rely on each other. We can't service east side of our lake from, from our station down here on Main Street as effectively as we should. And town of Delafield's station is very well situated to take care of that for us. And our training center in, in Neshota gives us some presence on the north side of the lake as well. And so, there's a lot of logistical sense that, that, that goes into why this helps us be good, good, good partners and neighbors with our neighbors. And then, of course, capital costs get spread amongst all of us. So, this is my, like, these are the things I think we're accomplishing here and, and, you know, love it if it was free, but, um, you know, the other piece of this is, you know, how, how do we look to the future and what's, what is in the future for us? Again, the, you know, the amendment satisfies the budget that we're, that, that is necessary to get these new people hired and turn into a full-time department. But, something that happened between our last meeting and our discussion on this and now is that signing the amendment before meant that we were signing up a brand-new seven-year contract. While this is still the same situation, we adjusted the, we maintain the two-year exit clause in here as a part of just some give and take. And what that does for us is, um, this is not a, as much as we like this to be a permanent marriage, we're signing up for a two-year hard-coded commitment that, that is a seven-year contract. So, after, we're, we're in it for two. I want to be in it for a long, long time and make this all work out. But, um, we still have the ability to explore other options and we do, we did open up the door to get a, a presentation from Western Lakes' proposal. This affords us the opportunity, we don't have a gun to our head to try to make a decision by November 1st here. We can take our time and really evaluate and, and vet an option. And something that I'm not going to, I don't think any of us should take credit for it because I know our, our, our local fire chiefs are very pragmatic and they've been talking from a distance for quite some time about the potential of advantages, maybe inevitability of a, of a future longer-term merger. And, um, part of what, we've just been another catalyst into that atmosphere. And, um, our, our two chiefs are talking. And they've, they, they don't have a firm schedule, but there's a cadence to it where they're meeting, I think, more, more frequently than monthly, looking into the future to talk about what, you know, 2027, 2028, 2029 would look like maybe and how we could help each other out. So, um, there's some wins to be gained by, by future consolidation, the future that this affords us to, to explore on our own clock and not really hastily, so. With that, that's my, that's my executive overview of this. I'm good with any questions or, I don't know if Tom, you want to add anything to what's actually in front of us tonight and how, like I said, I don't know how actionable it is. It's labeled as a draft. What would, what would be some of the proper options we could take tonight as far as actions?
Yeah, there's one thing I want to throw out, you know, the, the council has previously seen and approved the funding formula portion of this agreement, but it's important to understand some of the other things that are in there. And one of the most important ones would be the governance of the fire department and the changes that are involved with that. So, I just want to make sure it's understood that, um, a, a meeting could now be held with one municipality not present. A quorum only requires one person from six of the seven municipalities. There still needs to be a majority of the total number of people on the fire board there. And then, the required votes to approve something at the fire board level have changed. It used to be it required at least one vote from every municipality. Now, it requires, well, again, it still requires a majority of the, of everybody there, but only at least one vote from six of the seven municipalities is sufficient to pass anything. So, with that, as, as Tim said, this agreement has been made such that it, it does allow for it to just be a two-year agreement, if that's the direction the city wants to do go. So, it leaves our options available with Western Lakes, if that's something we want to look at either on our own or with our partners from Lake Country Fire and Rescue. But you're, you know, tonight, you're basically looking to either approve this amendment as is or if this amendment is not satisfactory to the council, I think it would be appropriate to identify what changes you'd be looking for and we could send that back to our, that feedback back to our partner municipalities. But, um, you know, we do need something to cover us for the next couple of years before we would be able to join Western Lakes. And with regards to the proposal from Western Lakes, they had said that they would be getting something to us in September. I did talk, talk to Chief Owen today and they've got something ready to go. They would like to initially present it to the mayor and I next week and then we, we would bring it to the council after that.
I have a couple of questions. First one is, I'm not seeing where the 10% savings comes from because I think our average cost is 41% and the lowest it gets to is 36.7. That's not 10%, that's 4%?
It's a 10% decrease in our share.
41 to 36, it's not 10%?
It's a little over, four, 4.5% into 41?
36.
10.9.
36.7 versus 41 is not 10%?
Steve, 10% of 41 is 4.1%. So, if we're going from 41 to 36, we're...
Well, that's 10% of the piece.
That's 10% of the fee.
I thought he meant we, our share cut by 10%. It did not. It's still 36, 37, when it should be significantly less.
Well, if our bill was a million, it's now 900,000. That's 10%.
And it's going to be applied to a much bigger number as we expand.
Yes.
Also, in the contract that I, I have a draft of, or the amendment, it says we can't get out till 2031. Page 32.
You said page 32? Is that what you said?
Yes. Paragraph C withdrawal after December 2029. Anybody wishing to withdraw can do so, but they have to give a two-year notice. It's 2031.
Yeah, that is...
And we can't even give a notice till 2029.
That is a miss, so that was, that was agreed, that was not agreed to under those terms. The terms were two years. So, that's, that's just something that needs to be, if you were to approve it, that would be, need to be updated to, to correct that. That was in agreement with the, with the municipal leaders when we were together.
But, I mean, that is concerning that that's not reflected in there and now...
I don't think we can vote on this without an accurate document that we're voting on. I also think we need to wait until we see what we have from Western Lakes before we entertain a vote on this.
Well, you can certainly, you can certainly vote based with an amended, with a proposed amendment to the agreement.
This is a complicated document. It seems to me like it warrants more thought and time than to jam it into a vote today.
I mean, I, I will, I will add that we just, I just received this document. I believe it was, you know, Thursday or Friday, it might have been Friday, after it gone through a whole host of litany by the various attorneys. And, um, I, I would appreciate an opportunity to go through this document some more before final approval to make sure that everything that was discussed has been properly incorporated into here. But with that being said, I still think, you know, it'd be very beneficial if the council could at least give an indication of which direction we'd like to be heading.
There's also, um, this, this document as drafted still says that we can be voted, outvoted and people can spend our money without our consent.
No, the budget has to be approved by the council.
It says six or seven votes and we're jammed.
That's approving the budget, not approve, not, that's not passing the budget, that's approving the budget at the board level.
That'd be the board recommending a budget to the municipalities?
Yes, each municipality, the, the same budget has to be passed by all seven municipalities.
The draft that I have is also missing Exhibit C, which is a critical document, which is the list of equipment and who has what share of what. I just received this over the weekend, but I myself was tied up with some medical stuff I had going on. Didn't get a chance to really read it very carefully. I'm not comfortable voting on this today, period.
Made clear. So, we're not looking, so the intent is here, where, where's the general sentiment of the, of the council as far as the option in front of us, the options we have in front of us?
I think it's a good idea for us to voice any, any concerns and then digest it a little more till next month. But, to inform our partners of, of what we're thinking, what we like, what we don't like about it.
Haven't we been doing that? For years? Been discussing what we do and do not want. I think what Tim has gone over makes a lot of sense. So, I'm confused as to why it requires even more time and more delay and more discussion. I realize that there may be errors, but we do this routinely as a common council where we make minor corrections or a tentative approval based on a final draft. I don't think we need to just drop everything. I know there are a lot of new people on the common council, but this has been something that we have been working on and working with for a long time. And I think we need to actually move forward.
I have another question of something, I didn't, again, I didn't have time to, to read this appropriately, so I don't know what I would think if I had time to actually study it. But, the memorandum of understanding seems to handcuff us budgetarily for all of the years through 2029, that we have no ability to annually speak to any of our budgets.
It, it guarantees the appropriate level of budgeting to hire three new people a year for four years straight and to maintain the existing headcount. And that needs to be established, embedded by the, through the budget process. Anything outside of that, that would be above a 2.5% increase over the prior year's budget would also go through the, any kind of a scrutiny and approval process. Does that make sense? I mean, when you say handcuff, it, what we are doing is we are, we are signing up for a hiring plan to bring 12 new firefighters in, three a year for four years. And while we, while there was a substantial amount of effort and work being put in by the chief and others to try to come up with actual numbers for those, it's impractical because you cannot predict whether or not you're going to have a turnover. We had somebody leave for the, for an Army National Guard service that was gone for a year. We had to backfill them. So it's the presentation of what it takes to maintain the existing level of headcount at the fire station and also add those three new people each year is going to be vetted by the fire board and then by the budget process. But it's, it's, we're not saying that we're going to go find someone for $5 an hour. We're going to be, there's a, there's a range that's practical that brings a budget increase in the neighborhood of between $300,000 and $400,000 each of those years to bring those three individuals in. That's just a reality of what, what staffing costs. So it's, it's, it's more, you use the word handcuff, it's a, it's a commitment and it's what it is. We are saying that this is what we're signing up for to solve the issue with the fact that our station is browned out 50% of the time and, and Town of Delphills is browned out about 30% of the time.
Right. By handcuff, I'm, sorry, by handcuff, I mean that we can't get out of the agreement because we've agreed to fund it.
You're stuck for two years, any rolling number through the, beginning at the end of the year you're in. So it could be up to 35 months or as little as 24 months at any given point in time. But so, yeah, you identified that that's a, that's not included in here, so that's a problem as far as that, that term.
Yeah, because, yeah, the draft I have seems to say that we're locked in till 2031. And if we commit to this money, we're locked into that too, even if we try to leave.
Tom will agree with me, that's wrong, that's, that's, that's an error.
Correct. That's what, that's what it says, that's not what it's supposed to have said.
That needs to be fixed.
So I'm, I, I agree that I think we need some time to just look it over more thoroughly and be specific. But from what you've explained and what, what the intent is behind this, I'm really encouraged. And I feel like this is a really, I feel like this is a really good solution for what we've been working for, for years. So I, I've been very vocal that I have had a lot of concerns. And I, I'm, I'm, feel very positive about these changes. And we still have options if it doesn't go the way that we're expecting it to go. I do think we all need some time to really digest it, and I'm not ready to vote on it immediately. But I want to say, I think this is a positive thing. And if, if what you're saying is all reflected in this, I would feel really good moving forward with it.
That's helpful feedback. I don't want, would you mind if we go down the line and have everyone say similar things? You don't have to all agree, but just, where's your head at, Mark?
I, you know, the hiring plan is no surprise. I think we've all been on board with this. I'm on board with this for your, for your hiring plan and the budget increase necessary to do that. I still struggle with the formula as proposed. While it gives us some short-term benefit, it's still based on, mainly on call volume, which has nothing to do with staffing cost. It's still a, it's still an irrelevant formula. I think it should be based on something that, that...
Yeah, I, so I, I might, maybe could have put it in two different bullets, but when I put what, what relationship those three, the property tax, I mean, property values, population and call volume, what relationship they have to the funding formula. Segregating out call volume is appropriate because that does have less of an impact on actual hard costs, like you've been stating all along. But it absolutely had, the other item I put in there was the fact that it has a huge impact on service levels. If there's one, if there's a single community that's occupying a disproportionate amount of the staffing time, that is a decrease in service level and availability of staff for the other people that are already, that also pay, right? I mean, I don't want to argue against myself as far as, but, but that's a fact. I mean, it is, as soon as that single Maytag repairman goes out on a call, he's not available for the other guy, even no matter how infrequently he needs to be used. So, but that's, so that's... I, so I appreciate, I appreciate that fact, and I think it is a little higher than it should be, but that's where we ended up.
Okay, my turn. I guess we're going down the road. I have a couple of concerns. Obviously, I, I think the draft, as I can read and understand it, it's hard when it's so long. And, but we have been looking at these things, including the formula, the funding formula, for a long time. I do want to point out, like, we're looking at response time. We're looking at, you know, reducing brownouts reliability for our citizens to have these people come, to have the very best trained people and showing respect to both the firefighters and to the other municipalities. I think our concerns are legitimate. I'm not saying they're not. I just think we, we need to dance with the people who brought us here and to work through, as this is a move forward, work through whatever final details or errors that we saw. But I deeply appreciate the hard work that has been going on for so long. And I think it's much better to work through this, at least for a couple of years. It would take that long to make a change. And I'm not sure the grass would be any greener. I mean that sincerely. So I thank you for this hard work, and I'm very supportive of continuing forward.
I would echo what, what everybody else has said. It looks like you're making really good progress on this. We're coming up with a better agreement every time we, we turn it over. The funding formula is a good example of that. The last time we looked at it, it was 60, 20, 20? No, it's 50.
60, 20, 20. That's where we're at.
Okay. I saw 50, 25.
It's just a transition step.
Okay. Oh, okay. But we're making progress. You know, I want to say out loud that we're still highly committed to LCFR. The dispute is really with our municipal partners rather than the department itself. And I think this agreement gives us flexibility if we can't reach agreement with our municipal partners to, to do what's in our best interest. And I think that's the direction we need to go on behalf of our taxpayers. So that's where I am for tonight.
All right. What do you think, George? Oh, you turned off there.
As being a three-week member of this council, I've been trying very diligently to get up to speed on this issue because I know it's, it's a major, major concern and issue in front of the city of Delphill. If the vote is tonight, okay, I don't really feel, really feel comfortable voting one way or the other. I don't know if an abstention is possible.
It doesn't look like we're going to get to a vote because of the state of the contract.
Okay.
Doesn't, it's not, doesn't, it's not reflective of a rather key point.
Again, coming into this at the tail end of the discussion, I, I would be more comfortable seeing us negotiate further into this IMA agreement and see where we go from there.
All right. Tim, I think we've made great progress in the last three years it's been, at least since this started. I've been very pleased to see that our other partners have kind of decided, okay, we're, we're going to cooperate with City of Delphill. We're, we're, we're not such, such bad people. And so I think our relationships have been, been improving, which I think is something that's essential to, you know, keeping together as a, as a long term. My goal is to just try and keep it as LCFR as long as possible. I think we've got a great core, and we just keep, keep working. I like to get this thing, have those errors changed so we can take a look at it again. I wouldn't wait an extra month if we have a meeting coming up in two weeks. I don't have my calendar in front of me, but maybe if we, if we do, we could talk about it at that meeting. If we don't, maybe we can order a, a special meeting and just, just talk about this and get it done.
We can do that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Steve, what do you think?
Well, first and foremost, I haven't been here through the whole ordeal. I came in and, in the middle of, in trans, in transit, in transition here. And as has been voiced many times here by everyone, I think this council is unanimous in the fact that we all support LCFR as an organization. We love it. It's great. We'd love to have it continue. What we have is a real problem with the cost share. And I'm not satisfied with the results here. I may be out here in the ocean alone, but I'm not satisfied with the share, the way it's been negotiated. I feel like it's a pebble in the ocean towards where I should go. And that doesn't mean I wanted approving this of the council. I mean, obviously, the council, I'm not the only person here. So it can go a number of ways. But I would love for us to be able to get our partners to be more equitable and stay together for the long term permanently. But quite frankly, that's not what I see happening right now, so I'm not real happy about it. And I see some governance things here that bother me. I think we can probably clean those up, especially the thing I mentioned about the, the exit language, et cetera. And we need to see the allocation of the equipment schedule because we do want to exit. We need to know what that even looks like to evaluate it. The, but I think that we need some time to digest this. We should wait till we have the Western Lakes proposal so we have better perspective about whether we're going to get better equity from that than we can from this in a, in a quick window. I think we probably will have something pretty reasonable proposed by them.
So...
And we also have other alternatives. So I think time is something we need a little more of, not eternally. But I think more importantly, we also need to give Chief Fennig something that he can move forward with confidence that we're going to back the hiring needs for the coming year, the 26 budget. I think that's really what we should be talking about as to, as opposed to getting tangled up in this amendment. We just need to stay on the shorter focus while we're working on cleaning this.
I hear you. Okay. I truly appreciate the candidness and openness and perspectives. They're educated and as educated as they can be. And you guys, I think you represent a solid cross-section of our city. So if we're all like, yeah, let's sign it, that's, that's fine. But we'll, Tom and I will clean, will work with the, the language issue with the, the term because that was clearly something that we agreed differently. So that was, unfortunately, we didn't have a chance to get that figured out in advance of this meeting.
Just, sorry, just really quickly, is, is this the draft that was sent out to all the municipalities?
Yeah.
Okay. So there, are they potentially voting on this draft?
I think we've got first swing, I don't know if anyone else is meeting tonight. It's possible. I don't know. I don't know. We'll, we'll figure that out because that, it's, it's nothing that can't be corrected. But that would be create a, a little divergence in the schedule and other things. Oh. Chief, would you mind, we're at a point where, if you could share, that'd be great. I didn't mean to hide you behind the post.
Thanks, everyone. I mean, I'm going to own the typo of the withdrawal. I mean, we, we changed the, the initial term. I didn't change the bottom part. We'll get it updated and back to you by 10:00 AM tomorrow.
Okay.
And I know no one else has it on their agenda tonight, so we'll get it cleaned up. So if there's any other mistakes out there, but...
All right. It's fair.
Easy.
As long as it takes, everything seems rushed anyways, so we'll, we'll keep after it. Any other questions for Chief?
I have a question for the chief, but it's on a different topic. Is that something I can ask him?
Let's not do it under this agenda item then. He's available. Right, all right.
Sticking around?
Thanks. We're good. No, no.
No, no, it's to an agenda item.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else you think we need to do here, Tom? We kind of got, got some direction.
No, I think we're, we're good for now. Maybe if we could get a head nod on the next item too, the MOU, to see if there's any major concerns with that. But there's no need to pass that tonight separate from the, the main amendment.
Yeah, do you, so the, like I said, the purpose of the memorandum of understanding was to replace numbers that were down to the dollar, looking out four years on what this new entire department's going to cost as far as the employees, the new additional employees. And it was, we were wrestling over the numbers. I mean, I think it was more Tom and, Tom and Matt. But, so this is just saying it's going to cost what it's going to cost. If, if there's, if there's three veteran firefighters available that are perfect for the culture fit and their time in life and what we need, and they're a little bit more expensive that year, they're more expensive that year. If we get all three rookies and there's someone that's not available till September instead of right away in February, that's, I mean, am I saying this right, Chief? So there's not, there's not a, no one's got a crystal ball shiny enough to predict the actual budget numbers that we were trying to bake into a contract. And then that would have just caused a problem with, well, there's not enough money in there or there was too much money in there. And where's it go? How's it managed? And that wouldn't have been a pleasant accounting wrangling. So we just took it out and said, it's going to cost what it's going to cost, and we're going to work it out. That's, it's a harder way to do it than just guarantee the money. But it's, it's the prudent thing to do and keeps it in the budget process. So that's the essence of this memorandum of understanding. Is there anything else that's in there that, that's really it?
No, that's it, yeah.
So I, assuming everything else is good, anybody who have any questions on that? Because, okay, all right. Thank you. All right. Well, we will be seeing this again with documents that don't say draft and maybe other options. But, so stay tuned. I appreciate all your patience.
I appreciate your work.
All right. So next item is, oh, good. I'll keep the mic. Mayor's report. So recent events. Well, we had a great lion's show. We had this beer and wine event just this week, this, this weekend. So summer's a fun place in the city of Delphill, so that, if you didn't know that already. Other thing is, don't be alarmed, we've got to accept the resignation of Dan Jashinsky, Jashinsky from our citizen member position on our plan commission. He is staying on Public Works. He knows where every rock in the city is. But he's, he needs, he needs to free up his Wednesdays. So, and look for a motion to accept his resignation.
I move to accept the resignation of Dan Jashinsky from the plan commission.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Can we just make that a, read out that it's effective?
Oh, yeah, effective.
September 25th.
He gets one more meeting.
Effective September 25th. I'd like to make it December 25th.
Yeah, right.
But September 25th.
And who had the second? Paul, Paul.
Yes, still, still second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay, or abstentions. Okay. Thanks for, I think, 15 years, maybe longer, on plan commission, but longer for that, for others. Then I found a great candidate, Leslie Donovan. She's got a plan and commission experience in Northern Illinois. She's lived up here for a couple of years, and she loves it and graciously volunteered to dedicate some of her time. So I'm looking for a motion to approve Leslie Donovan to be the citizen member position on the plan commission, vacated by Dan Jashinsky, term to expire in April 2028.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just want to comment, Leslie's been a great and very engaged member of Park and Rec, so I think she'd be great on plan commission.
Yeah, no, I, we hit it off. That's good. All right. Thanks, everyone. All in favor?
I have Schaefer for the second. Is that correct?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay, abstentions. All right. Welcome, Leslie, at the end of the month. And then just a couple notes. Got two, two employees in the library that have been here for, Melissa Beck has been here for 15 years and Cassidy Hamel for 17. So if you see them in the library, say thanks for your work. All right. Item 10, new business. 10A, discussion and possible action regarding consideration of City of Delphill joining a coalition of business, local governments, and fire and safety organizations being built by the Waukesha County Business Alliance to support the request for a major highway project study for the expansion of Interstate 94 through western Waukesha County. Can we vote on this and just get it done? No, just say, give us a little overview of what this is.
Yeah, so the Waukesha County...
Why about the freeway build? We don't, we just cut to the chase.
The Waukesha County Business Alliance is looking to build a coalition in support of expanding I-94 to three lanes in each direction. The first step in that is a major project study that needs to be done. If we were to kick off that study next year, that would be, the timeline would be construction in 2035. So that's kind of the lead time involved in a project like this. This was, the, the study was actually in the budget last year, but it got vetoed by Governor Evers. And the Business Alliance is adamant that this is necessary for Waukesha County to address traffic volume, traffic delays, old outdated substandard design, crashes and safety issues, and growth and development in Waukesha County. And so they're looking to find if there are local municipalities that would like to just at least put their name on as far as being in support of it and to join the coalition.
Tom, I've got a question for you. I know that the bridge on Highway C over here is supposed to be redone in, I believe it's 2029. Would that be impacted? I mean, clearly, if we, if we expanded the freeway, the bridge would be too small. How does that interface there?
No, the, the bridge will be built for the future expanded interstate, whether that happens in 2035 or 2050 or whatever.
Good question, though, right?
Do we know who, who would pay for the study? Is it a county? Is it a county expense or?
The, the state of Wisconsin, Wisconsin Department of Transportation.
This is, I think this is a vote, a vote to.
To do the study, get the ball rolling.
Voting in favor of this action here is to join this coalition as a city, along with our other regional municipalities to show support amongst our neighbors for this type of work and commitment from the state and feds to do.
The, you know, the, the action of the coalition right now is to get the state to include the $8 million in the budget for the study.
I would like to move to approve city of Delafield join the coalition.
Second.
More discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, or abstentions? Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Keep us posted, Tom.
Will do.
All right. Next item, 10B, discussion and possible action regarding proposed ordinance number 842, amending section 485E entitled Parking Prohibited City of Delafield Code of Ordinances to allow parking for NegaWicke Yacht Club members only with a NegaWicke Yacht Club sticker permit on a segment of Mariner Drive. It was identified on the official traffic map and posted as proposed by Alder Person Price. So I don't know.
I can start things off.
Why don't you start it off, Tom?
Okay. First, a little bit of background, some comments from that we had earlier tonight. First, on the special membership drive. I'm not aware of any special membership drive other than we have a membership drive each year, like any organization, to, to add members. This year, we added, I believe, around 15 or 16 members and lost about eight to 10 members. So we had a net gain of six or seven people. I think we're getting close to be capping out the, the, the total membership pretty close to where we are now just because as far as the parking for cars, parking for, for boats, the size of our yacht club building and the property itself, you can only get to a certain point and you have to stop. So that's going to happen on a, on a, on a natural basis. As far as exercising other land for, for parking, the only place that we found to possibly park on would be across Highway 83 in a small subdivision by the church. That's a long walk. So that would not work real well. It might work for a, for a, for a special regatta where we could have a bus or something bringing people back and forth. But for the regular membership throughout the summer, that would, just, just would not work at all. Our really parking issue has not come from, so much from new members, but it changed in the demographics above our members. Our membership for years came from people who lived on the lake. They came to the yacht club in a boat. At the cost of lake homes now, that has changed dramatically. Now probably 80% of our members don't live on the lake. They have to drive here. They used to have their boats in front of their house. Now they have them in our, in our parking lot on trailers. We're not the only yacht club in the area that has similar issues. We don't have the room to add extra land. I mean, we are landlocked. So all we can do is do what we have done in the past. I've been associated with the clubs since about 1965, something like that, when I first started going there. And then at that time, that was almost exclusively. I mean, they wouldn't even accept a member who didn't live on the lake. So that's changed 100%. But as far as any concerns we have with, with, with neighbors, I know our board is very interested on addressing those neighbors, meeting those neighbors, and come to a conclusion that everybody's, you know, happy with. This is purely a parking issue. I like to, you know, recommend a change in the parking status on Mariner Drive. It's currently listed as no parking on the east and west side of the street. Mariner Drive is located just north of Public Boat Launch. There's five homes on the, and the NegaWicke Yacht Club on Mariner Drive. The club is asking to allow parking for NLYC members only on the east side and continue no parking on the west side. And it's only behind the yacht club. There was a lot of discussion here. There was going all the way up to the end of Mariner. We're not asking that. We, we think that's, you know, up the street is too, too narrow as well. We're just asking for it right behind our club. One of the people suggested that we try and expand. Tom came up with a, an area that we could possibly add five spots on the city right away on the west side of the road and that would keep those cars right off the road. That's kind of a hill right now, so we'd have to decide and talk with a, with a engineer to see if that's, you know, plausible, you know, to have the proper angle to have those cars there. But it, it, it might work. But the cars on the, on the street, they've been parking there for a long, long time. We've, just a little history on the, on the parking on that. When the park came in, the Waukesha County Park wanted there to be no parking. The reason for it was not a safety issue or a fire issue or anything else. It was so people would not park there and sneak in the park without paying. One reason that this is looking the way it is, that still keeps the parking, the Waukesha County Parks Commission, they would, you know, prefer to have people park up, up on top with their boats and, and cars. This would again, would be only for the NegaWicke Yacht people. Not so much we're trying to be in special. It's just that we need to, you know, protect, protect the, the park from, you know, fishermen parking up there at four o'clock in the morning, seven days a week. I think that would be much more detrimental to the neighborhood than having the yacht club park there on Tuesdays and Thursday evenings and Sunday mornings. Sunday morning, we don't have a real, a real big crowd. So I mean, this really is Tuesday and Thursday and four or five Saturday nights. That's it. That's only a wrong, was it 18 or 19 days in the course of an, of an entire year? The proposed change still does not allow people to sneak into the park as it only allows sticker members to park there during club events. We're only open for three months a year and just on Tuesdays and Thursdays. The city of Delafield has allowed members to park there on special events and on Tuesdays and Thursdays, on that matter, for a long, long, long time. Probably all the way back to the 60s. We would call, call, call the police department, say we have an event. They'd say, fine. It was not an issue at that point with anybody in, in the neighborhood complaining to anybody until this year. Again, we want to stress that if there are other issues, we want to address those with the, with the neighbors. But this is simply a parking issue and not other issues. The police department, you know, has, has looked at this. The fire department says there is no issue getting trucks in and out of there with one side parking. The park commissioner agrees with this. He doesn't have an issue. The mayor and the city administrator have, you know, helped to put this together. So, you know, things really aren't going to change. It's just the way it's going to, has been for a long, long time. The neighbors, to my knowledge, haven't had an issue with parking other than this year. So I don't think that that's an issue. Any costs as far as this involves, you know, making signs or whatever, that would be borne by the yacht club and, and not the city? One of the reasons why I think Tom felt this was a better issue because if we had special permits or parking permits and a special park permit, it would cause an undue hardship in our staff here to trying to, you know, handle this. This would be simply special stickers, you know, as handled by the yacht club with each member. And that's done, done each year. The police department would have a copy of that. So it would, shouldn't be not any issue to, to notice who's parking legally and who isn't. So I'd like to motion that the parking status on Mariner Drive be changed to no parking except by NLYC members displaying a club member parking sticker. This will create no expense at the city except for signage, which the clubs will be happy to, to pay for.
I'll second that motion.
Molly, do we need in the motion including passage of ordinance number 842? We need to pass.
I think it would be preferred, yeah.
You need to pass the ordinance, right?
Yes, I think that will.
If you could add that to my motion then.
Can you just restate the motion? If you read the agenda language, that would probably be.
Paul, if you're interested, you could simply state motion to pass ordinance number 842.
Motion to pass, motion eight, amendment 842.
And I'll second that.
Discussion?
Yes.
I had heard some time back that the, the club was looking to lease some property from the county to build a parking lot. And then when I saw this on the agenda, I thought, okay, great. You know, at first glance, they came up with a solution. The more I thought about it, the more I dug into it. I had a lot of questions before I would feel comfortable supporting this. If you go drive down that street, it's a narrow dead end street. Seven, seven properties on the lakeside, heavily wooded park on the other side. I guess, number one, what's the legal impact of giving control of public property to a private club? This club would be controlling who's parking on our land, on city land, city property. Could other Delafield businesses also claim exclusive rights to the public street in front of their property? If we do it for one, I would expect a lot of other similar requests, especially downtown. And, and if we do it for them, why not? Why not do it for everybody down here? How do we monitor, validate and enforce parking passes that we have no control over? They're, they're issued by a private club. Are they valid? Are they expired? Are they revoked? How many of these are out there? However, they're being shared. Impact on the residential neighborhood should be considered. I think, I think they should talk to the neighbors and understand, you know, issues, potential issues with noise, pedestrian safety. All those cars are going to have to go down to the end of the street to turn around or turn around in the neighbor's driveway, which is most likely going to happen. And that's a lot of cars because they have 30, 30 parking spots there now. If that's not enough, that's, I guess they're getting, they're getting, kind of overgrowing their, their location. And how do we justify no parking requirement, but only one resident has the right to park there? Why wouldn't the street be open to all Mariner residents? It would seem equitable. The ordinance says club membership has ignored the no parking law. They've, they've been using Mariner Drive for overflow parking despite it's being posted as no parking.
I can interject something, Mark, because that's, that's, some of that is the nature of being the size community that we are and the age community that we are. It's like, so the reason that I, I became involved at all or was invited to be involved is our police chief was being asked to, you just keep doing what you've always done. He's like, well, what, ignore the law? And I'm like, so I'm, I don't, I don't like that. That wasn't appealing to me either as, as the mayor. Like, okay, well, for some people, we're going to ignore the law, right? However, you know, and it was brought up earlier that this, I think they were, this organization was founded before the turn of the 20th century, right? 1895 or something. So there's some, there's some legacy issues with some of these older pieces of property. And we ran into something similar with Kurt's Steakhouse recently where their parking that's been there for 40 something years is, was on the right of way. So, and we just, we, we, we cleaned that up by creating a very specific right of way easement agreement with them to just not have to move their parking lot around. This is, this is right. You're different. It is a public, is a public street. And one of my first swings at this as a suggestion was a pass just like we have for parking at St. John's, or Bleecker Street Boat Launch. Because there's, those are parking passes that, there's certain restrictions on who can get them. You go into city hall, get them, and then you've got a parking pass. But that's where it came around to Tom and Molly saying, well, there's, there's administrative costs to that where we're like checking people in, we're just giving them. And it's very, it's such a niche, very specific request and need that serves something rather unique. So that's how, that's how this came to be where it is. I'm not saying that this is, I'm just, I'm giving you some background to answer the one question about, you know, designating public parking for specific people. We do that in other, other places, like I said, like the Bleecker Street Boat Launch and for special event parking, which we, which we have periodically as well. So this, this is where we ended up for discussion, debate and possible pass or action, right?
Yeah, yeah. I, I just read that and felt like, well, if I speed more, will we raise the speed limits for me? It just does, it just, it doesn't feel right. As does the, the impact of giving control, permanent control to a private club for how that, that city property, that public property is used. And as with, as with any conditional use permit, the club should be conforming to the residential neighborhood, behaving appropriately, not, not vice versa. That's, that's, you know, I support them, but I also support the neighbors. They're all my constituents and I think we have to consider the other, the other neighbors as well. There's 30 parking spots on the, on the club property. There's a parking lot up the hill. If they have deliveries, if they have handicapped people, that's what uses 30 spots for that. Everybody else can walk down the hill, just like all the, the neighbors who have guests or the park users have to park up in the, up in the lot. So not convenient, but, you know, maybe you get a golf cart and cart people down if you need it. But everybody else, everybody else manages, so they would think that they could too. That's it.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I also have a similar sentiment. I think that the, the consideration for the neighbors is really important. It's very clear what the people on that street feel. I think this is a very, I have driven down there. It is a very narrow street. So to allow for parking like that, I think would be not in the best interest for that particular location.
So as it relates to that topic, that's what I wanted to ask Chief Fennings about. My understanding, Chief Fennings, is you went out there with a ladder truck to make sure that you do have room to go in and out, that we don't have a safety problem for the fire department. Is that correct?
Yes, I don't recall the exact date, Tom. I don't know if you do, but we, we went out there late July.
I think it was, yeah, I was going to say August.
Yeah, late July, early August did some measurements for Tom. Demonstrated clearly that if there is one, we'll call it a heavy, which is a ladder truck, a pumper. If there's one vehicle parked on the typical, in the typical parking area, we can still get the fire truck through there. So we did a fire truck and the ambulance. We picked yours. I think we sent them to Tom for sure, so we can clearly demonstrate that. It, it does not, definitely does not work with both sides. That's why we said one side.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to make you wait so long for that. Appreciate you staying.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly note that it always makes me uncomfortable when the people who are the most directly impacted were the last ones to find out about something. I think anything worth doing is worth doing well. There appears to have been a lot of thought put into it, but nobody thought to talk to the people who live right next door. And I, I'm uncomfortable with the proposed location of this parking. It's convenient for the yacht club members and I, but I think it's a dangerous thing to put it on the curb. And there was one comment from one of the residents, the neighbors, that they couldn't get a truck with a trailer on it. So it's not just, it feels like not a safe solution to a very intermittent problem. So I'm just wondering if, why there couldn't be some kind of golf cart or some kind of shuttle on the handful of times this is happening. And we could respect the, the quiet of the neighborhood as much as we can. I'm not, I'm not real comfortable.
No, if you're talking from a, from a, a safety or especially just a safety, can you imagine 30 golf carts going up and down that, that steep hill, parking way in the back? There is no parking at the top of the hill. The only parking is way into the park. So you're talking probably a three-quarter mile walk down a steep hill or down the, you know, a boardwalk that goes down the side there. It's, it's impossible. There's no person would, would join a club and say, yeah, you can, you can join our club, but you got to park three-quarters of a mile away and walk down a steep hill. It's, it's not going to happen. The club has been doing this for 60 years without an issue. It became an issue this summer. It hasn't been an issue before. There's been no safety issues, no accidents, no fire issues. There's no arguments with anybody else except right now. It's just a little bit strange that it would happen that way. If there's other issues where. If there's, if there's other issues, we're happy to talk about them and solve them. But from a parking issue, there's never been a complaint about parking.
Paul, could you clarify for me one other thing? I'd make sure I saw this correctly. In the map that we have that shows where the parking spaces are?
Yeah.
Uh, the perception here is that cars would be up by the residences blocking the cul-de-sac, which is where Dr. Berger, is that your name?
Yeah.
I, I believe you were the one who said you had trouble moving a vehicle in with a trailer, but they were in the way up by your house in the cul-de-sac.
Now, this will not be behind any houses, just behind the club.
Right, so this wouldn't interfere with any of that, correct?
Yeah.
So, and I think there's a telephone, I went out there and looked. There's a telephone pole that marks the end of the park property that leads into where your homes are, right? And I think that if this is, if I understood the map correctly, it's talking about from that pole to the pump house, right? Is that what you understand? Is that what's on the map?
Yeah.
The pump house on the corner to the pole is what they're talking about that, that Tom has mapped out for the parking spaces. Do I have that correct?
Yeah, it stops a little short of the pump house.
Okay, so a little short of the pump house. So it doesn't go all the way to the curve that's out there because that would be a little bit dicey having cars around that curve by the pump house, I think. So I think it's, I think that Tom and his team took all these things into consideration, including bringing the fire department out to check everything because they obviously want to make sure it's all solid too, which is one of the reasons I think it's pretty well thought out.
I love it, I just love it though, I'm being facetious to that. It's very well thought out, it really is, except you didn't talk to any of the people directly impacted. That's my problem. Why didn't we take the time to knock on the doors of the people who live right there? And this is not the first time that the city has really been thoughtful about a project, except we don't talk to the people directly impacted. We didn't.
It'd be a good idea to meet with those people and see if you can come to a, a amicable proposal.
Right now, there's a motion, right now, there's a motion if you're asking to-
Up the Hill Walkway is, has been, this boardwalk was built there specifically for people to walk down. That's how people get into the park. Park users don't park down the hill. They park up the hill. That's how you get to the beach. It's, yeah, it's a, it's a walk. If, if you have members that can't make that walk, that's what you-
I have never seen anybody walk down that boardwalk at night, not once. And most of those activities are, are in the evening.
Okay.
So I mean, it, it's impossible to expect somebody to walk up that long hill and park way down the park. I mean, you're talking probably a half mile, most of it uphill, at night, when, when they've been doing this for fifty, sixty years without issues. No issues at all.
Well, you're making a change, right? There, there's been no issues. Uh, you're, and you're implying that the, that there's going to be less parking on the street now?
No, it'd be the same parking up until-
They're not going to park on the other side, they're not going to park down by the residents?
We have not parked on it. And once the, the, the chief said, okay, we're going to have to, you know, go, go along with the parking, we have not parked on that. Prior to that, we, we did, and there weren't any issues.
Have you talked to the neighbors about that? Because that's not what I-
I was going to say the neighbors have all here saying that there were, that there have been issues.
And it's not just today. I've heard parking complaints and noise complaints for six months.
Yeah.
More, more than that. It, it goes to the last year. I, and I can show you the, I can show you the videos of the one AM parties outside. I can show you the pictures of the parking, the complaints that they're getting.
Parking issues?
It's been parking and parking complaints.
So there's, there's a motion in a second. Is there any other comments directed toward the action regarding parking?
I'd like to weigh in as the, the alderman that represents the district that can't see the lake. But on, on behalf of, of, of the residents out there, I, I see this as a measure that legalizes a bad practice that's been in place for a long time. And from that perspective, almost exclusively, I can't support it.
Any other comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Was, was it Paul and Steve?
Abstain. I'd like to see it. Go over there and look at it.
All right, that's fine. So we've got-
Point of order, should, should, uh, yacht club members abstain from this issue?
That's their, that's their, that's, you'd have to look into something else to, that's, there's rules and ethic things about that, but-
Okay.
That's, that's a personal judgment call.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so motion fails. Um, all right. Item ten D, discussion possible action to send a formal letter to Lake Country Municipal Court, Administrative Committee requesting approval of City Delafield becoming a member municipality of the court. We're currently a contract municipality of the court. Tom, what is this?
Yes, so the city joined Lake Country Municipal Court May first of two thousand twenty-four. All indications are that, uh, it's been a mutually beneficial, uh, relationship. Uh, good for the city, good for the court. And so I approached the, uh, chairman of the Administrative Committee of the Court about the city becoming a, um, member municipality, uh, which means we would then become, uh, have a representative on the Administrative Committee and a vote on, uh, the court activities. And, uh, he encouraged us to apply for that and is looking for a formal letter of application. And, and that's what I'm looking for the council to approve tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Everyone said they wanted to do it. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, let's become a full member. Okay, E, Tony, um, looking for motion to approve the vouchers list.
I'm moved to approve the vouchers for the dates of eight twenty and through nine sixteen.
Second.
Second.
Any questions?
That's all right. He, he, he read it all out, so we'll let him take it.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, bills are paid. Report of city officials, um, Mr. Hafner.
Yeah, I was not present at the, uh, August, uh, council meeting, but I understand that the council asked for a update regarding the flooding activities from early August. And I did put a, a memo and an article in the, um, in the packet for your information. Uh, it really was a historic event as far as the amount of rain. Uh, we had it a little bit less here in Delafield than, um, our neighboring communities to the east. Uh, but it still was, uh, category is generally about a hundred-year, uh, rainfall event in our area. And, uh, further to the east are areas where it's being identified as a thousand-year, uh, type storm. Um, but we weathered the storm, uh, fairly well. Uh, actually, um, better than I expected when I was, uh, sitting there on that first Saturday night into Sunday morning and thinking about what, uh, what it was going to bring. Um, the major impacts that we saw were, um, we had two of our twenty-six were lift stations that, um, were overwhelmed and we needed to, uh, staff those round the clock with bypass pumping to a downstream gravity manhole. Uh, that did require, as I said, full-time staffing around the clock by Public Works employees. Uh, for the lift station on West Shore Drive, that was for two and a half days that we had to do that. And for the lift station on Price Road, that was eight and a half days that we had to do that. Um, the other major impacts that we dealt with were lots of trees down, uh, especially following a early morning wind shear that came through, uh, on Tuesday morning. So a few days after the major rain. Uh, but the combination of saturated ground conditions with the, um, with the strong winds that we got, um, brought a lot of, uh, significant trees down. Um, the other thing would be just managing the lake level, managing the dam operation. Uh, there was a lot of, um, um, damage, uh, storm impacts, flooding impacts downstream from us. Uh, and we were inundated by calls from people asking for us to close the dam. Uh, we were working with the D N R and identifying, uh, dam operation, how we were, uh, operating the dam. Uh, we were able to make some changes throughout the, as we got, um, further into the event when, um, water level started succeeding, um, somewhat, the D N R did give us some flexibility to close the dam further. Um, ultimately, it was about three and a half weeks before we were able to get the water level back down to the normal water level. So, um, those are the major things we're looking at right now. Um, the Village Summit, uh, actually tonight, their village board is talking about, uh, coming up with some kind of a task force to look at what could be done in the future. Uh, if they have that, uh, task force approved, they've indicated that they're interested in having me serve on that task force to, um, uh, bring some education to them on how the dam operation works and how we, um, adjust it and things like that. So, um, that's what I've got for an update. Any questions?
Just a big thank you to city staff and Public Works and Lake Country Fire and Rescue for getting us through it, being out there for us.
I'd also like to make a little math statement. As a former math teacher, a hundred-year flood or one in a hundred-year flood is actually referencing a one in a hundred chance of something happening. So like a one percent. We use it anecdotally, and I know that I've always said, what do you mean one in a hundred? But it's actually, anytime there's an event, there's a, like a one in a thousand chance of it being afoot. So there you go.
That's exactly correct. You know, it's a, it's a one percent chance of happening in any given year. Um, but, um, you know, it, yeah, our, um, uh, our track record of past weather events isn't all that long. And, um, you know, well, we might have a hundred or two hundred years worth of data. Um, so to predict, um, those types of probability, it, it, it looks like we're a little bit off on that because seeing as how we've probably had, I don't know, six or seven or eight hundred-year events in the last fifteen years.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add that, um, we had some good, we had some healthy conversations a- after the event with, um, some of the administration at, at Towne Summit. And we're going to try to get together with them and make sure that, um, we're all on the same page with how we can work with the D N R and what, like Tom said, education on the challenges that we face with managing the dam. And, um, so that, I mean, everyone's looking for a throat to choke when their house is underwater. And it, it's not, it wasn't a, like, but, um, we, we get it. You know, how to, how to sympathetically respond to those and point them in the right direction is something we can improve on, so, mostly me. Um, okay, anything else, Tom?
No, that's it for this evening.
Okay, and you guys have said, did you reference the budget schedule that's in there?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot the budget. Yeah, so the two thousand twenty-six budget schedule is in the packet. Uh, the key dates for the council to be aware of is, uh, we're looking to have the budget workshop on Thursday, October twenty-third. Uh, the budget public hearing at our regularly scheduled council meeting on Monday, November third. And, uh, the final budget approval at our regularly scheduled council meeting on Monday, November seventeenth.
All right, thank you. Um, Molly, anything for us?
Uh, just a quick summary. Uh, so we did have the Thursday, Friday closure. Um, we had a really excellent learning experience. Um, again, we all were able to, uh, tend our individual tracks and really gain, uh, collective knowledge. So, uh, thank you for that. And then, um, I did check in with the library just to make sure that there weren't angry customers down there. And they said the inquiries were just ensuring the library was open. There weren't anybody who was concerned about the fact that City Hall wasn't open. So it was not a busy few days for us apparently. So, um, again, it was a great experience and we thank you for that.
All right, thanks, Molly. Uh, sit, look in the report packet for the city's treasurer's report. Any requests for future agenda items? Okay, uh, if anything comes up, reach out, please. Um, correspondence is in the packet. Seeing no further business, meeting is now adjourned at eight forty-eight.